Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continued meetings, at least three working days in advance, by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of chief administrator. Reasonable notice under circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Jackson, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel. On April 2nd, 2019, for item one, and May 2nd, for items two and three, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria of Virginia Code, Chapter 37.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I duly call this meeting to order. Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Today, we have the first part of our workshop dedicated to two topics. The first topic being the advisory committee update, and then a second topic, an update from Dr. Boone on our VRS program. And then we'll go into a closed session and then conduct our business meeting at 7:00. We'll go ahead and begin with the advisory committee update. Really appreciative to Mr. Clanton, Mr. Jordan, for reviewing the information and working together on this topic. So I'll go ahead and let you two begin and lead us in our discussion of the advisory committees.
All right. Well, good afternoon, colleagues. So what's coming around right now is a document that was submitted out today, just as some feedback regarding the advisory committees and some recommendations going forward. That, if you all recall, the last conversation that we had, and where we determined that a committee of two would be established as an ad hoc between Mr. Jordan and myself to do further review and to come back with some recommendations regarding advisory committees. I think we're all aware, they're there, there's policy, but one of the things that kind of came out of that was that there's different requirements for each one of them. There's, it doesn't seem to be any symmetry across the board for each and every one of them regarding appointments, regarding how we vote on them, and in regards to also the timing of those. And so it was also determined that a lot of our advisory committees are coming up for renewal. We have a lot of members who are coming up for renewal. And a portion of that discussion was also to look at, how do we actively engage and make it an easier process for individuals in the community to identify opportunities to serve on these advisory committees, considering that these committees directly make recommendations to this board for action. And so what I have before you today is looking at that and looking at the system. And one of the recommendations of that is really, if you would look at page, I guess the final page of the document, kind of gets to the skinny of it, and there's some edits and recommendations there, but it talks about the process. And Mr. Jordan and myself did have a conversation in the respect of this particular portion. And we agree in the respect that protocol is a function of the administration. But I don't believe that there's anything wrong in the board making recommendations as to what that particular protocol could potentially look like. And so that's what this looks like here, on this final page, looking at the appointment process and how those things come in. And so looking at this last portion of the last page, a spreadsheet of members from each of our four advisory committees we maintain with our clerk. And in the past, that had been a function. Our clerk maintained and worked directly with these committees, these advisory committees. And then we wanted to also look at rolling application process, that it's not just something at a certain part of the year, but that we're also looking at when there's opportunities or when openings happen, life happens, and so certain individuals may have to come off a committee, but that we establish a rolling process. And so we have a application that's online that individuals are able to fill out. But we're also looking at, kind of putting a little bit more around how that application process works. So looking at this application will be submitted to the board clerk. An email is sent from the board clerk to the applicant, thanking them for their interest and setting expectations for a follow-up, so setting some timelines. And I think we've heard a lot about that in the respect of making sure that we're responsive. So when someone submits something, that we're able to let them know what the expectation is for a response and action. The third item there is, an application is sent to the school board for review. So it's placed on the agenda, so notified by the chair, vice chair in the respect, so that it can be placed, and superintendent placed in the agenda planning. And then the board will vote on it, on approved members, the following monthly business meeting. So it happens in January. We're saying that by February, we've done the review, we're placing it there and replacing for action, so that we can get those individuals involved as soon as possible. The other thing is, is that we realize that there were members across the board, and so identifying skill sets, background, location geographic, and even affiliations. So maintaining a spreadsheet that has, and in some respect for nonprofits, we almost feel like a board matrix. Who are all these individuals? Where are they located? And so that, as a board, or anyone else, we could identify who's representing. You know, for anybody who has any historical context with the city of Norfolk, I know Rodney will probably jump on this, and your family had a good part of this, of going with the whole ward system when we moved away from, when we had, you know, we had, at large, everyone ran. But if you looked at it, there were certain individuals, like our power structure for the city was located in one central neighborhood, almost. So being able to identify that we have true representation across the city is important.
Diversity.
And diversity. So, and then the last thing is some type of welcome packet sent to newly appointed members, including an info sheet, information regarding FOIA, and other documents. And I've even gone as far as to saying, you know, we should even do some type of orientation for new, for these advisory committee members, and also letting them understand the role, the important role that they play in the overall accountability plan, overall strategic plan, we want to call it, direction of the district, and letting them know that their valued feedback is important to us. So that's that piece there. There are some edits in here to make it more streamlined, that literally the appointment, we were bringing it back to the board. There are some instances where the superintendent makes some appointments, some are done by administration, just so that there is a streamline across the board, that all those appointment powers will come back to the board. So those are really, in a skinny nutshell, what that does, and to streamline that. So, Mr. Jordan, I know we...
Yeah, so we, I guess, got a chance to talk about this a couple hours ago. I think much of what Mr. Clanton described is the current process. I think part of what our challenge has been is just having an opportunity to share with the full board what their process is. I do still have some concerns about the, some of the policy changes. You know, my recommendation was that we take this and send it through the policy committee. And, because in that policy committee, they get an opportunity to discuss it, have legal review, get input from, from the administration, because, you know, we govern through policy, so there's the policy, and then there are the regulations that describe the how-to. And I think that what's described under the application process really belongs in the regulations part of the policy. The other thing that, because we've, I think, in my almost seven years on the board, we probably have dealt with this five out of the seven years. And so last, February 2018, I think, was the last time that we went through this process, changing some of the policies, so that we could do the appointments as needed and streamline it. Some of the background, I think, that's important for the board to consider, because if we adopt these changes, you know, there's a, you know, we'll eventually vote on it. But just having had a chance to look at it a couple of hours ago. So when we worked through the last revision of changes for this policy, we did go and get feedback from the existing advisory committees. So we met with Shaq, helped and worked them to rebuild. We worked with GAC, CTE, and other committees. And part of what you see in here, for example, on the section with GAC, under letter C, item one, where it's recommended to strike from recommendations of the full advisory committee. The reason we had that there, and the reason we have that there, is we're trying to respect the ongoing work of these committees. So the GAC or other committees, they are out doing this work. They hear from the administrators, they do a lot of work, they eventually make recommendations to the board. But part of what they do and others do, they are also constantly out there trying to educate parents and citizens on the work of their committees and recruit families or individuals. So Shaq has a brochure, GAC has a process, CTE, they all are out there actively trying to encourage individuals to know about the work that they're doing and understand the work. So when, so if somebody is recommended for appointment, oftentimes, they may have somebody who may come and observe their meetings for a year or so and kind of learn the work. So then, when it comes time for them to make recommendations to the board or superintendent, they feel comfortable that they're recommending folks that can come on board and jump in. So we put that language in there and kept that language in there for that purpose, to encourage and support, at least at that time, the desire of the committees to also be able to make recommendations to the boards with appointments. I mean, ultimately, you know, I don't have any objection to the board making the appointments, because that's what we do. But I do think there is value in having the existing committees who are out there constantly hearing from parents, like at the CAC, they have an open comment portion. When we redid the CAC a couple of years ago, part of the pool of folks that we pulled from were folks who had appeared before the CAC, or folks that had appeared before the board, or people who were just out there that other CAC members had met through their efforts. So I think in, as part of our work around community engagement, that we need to be careful that we don't diminish the ability of the committees themselves to recruit and recommend. Likewise, with the, with some of the policies that deal with the nominating or recommendation coming from the superintendent, some of that is likewise intended to give the superintendent an opportunity to nominate individuals and make recommendations based upon the connections, the knowledge, the big picture view that the administration has. So if recall, I think it was in our last work session, we heard from Ms. Gosian, and she was describing all the different folks with the CTE committee and how they had subcommittees. So because of that work that they're doing every day, they have an opportunity, or should have an opportunity, to say to the board, hey, we've gone out, we've recruited folks, they're volunteers, they've engaged, they may be at a subcommittee today, but we would like to see them elevated to be a part of our permanent committee. And so it helps in that advise and consent role to have those in there. And that's one of the reasons why I just think that, I think this is good, but we should probably still send it to the committee, give the policy committee, give them the time to look at it, and also give the administration time to review it before we do a final adoption.
I agree with what you're saying, but I'm not reading this the same way as you are, because it seems that, by just saying that, the, I think that the nominations for new committee members should come from anywhere, and particularly, especially those who are currently sitting on the committee, they should be very active in the recruiting process. But, you know, and of course, Dr. Boone, I think everyone should be involved, but it's just talking about the process of, that goes to the clerk, those recommendations. But I'm not, I don't see where it's discouraging Dr. Boone or any of the committee members from doing that.
No, no, no. Two separate things. So I'm not speaking to the application process. If you look at the policy, so, for example, where I was under Gifted Education Advisory Committee, or number one, see where it has, the membership of the Gifted Education Advisory Committee will be appointed by the school board. And the current language says, from recommendations of the full advisory committee. So, I'm simply, I was simply explaining why that language was there. So the advantage of having it in the policy, even if we decide to reword it, is it codifies in there that we are recognizing and expecting the advisory committee itself to be included in the recommendation process. I agree with you, it doesn't prevent anyone from making a recommendation, because we know, right now, anyone can volunteer and make a recommendation.
But keeping, sorry.
I was just simply saying that if you, you can change the language, but by keeping something in there to that effect, then it says to the committees themselves that part of what our expectation of them is, is to help in the process to that and recommend candidates. That's all.
I would say, though, that keeping it the way it was makes it look like they only keep...
Exactly. I think we can adjust it so that we can...
Right. You can say which name.
Because I agree that there is value in hearing directly from the committee itself. But I think the way it's worded right now, just anyone who's reading it for the first time, it would just be, I don't have an opportunity, because if I don't get a recommendation from the committee. I just think of reword it to make it a broader, that, like what Mr. Jordan was saying, recommendation, it's a, you know, we're looking for you to do that as a part of your function, but then anyone else who sees that they might be a good fit, that they could apply.
I'm sorry, but if you go up to the, I don't know if it's sitting here. Yeah, what's missing...
That would have helped me.
Yeah, what's missing from here is the existing BCF policy. So the current policy, which speaks to what you all were addressing, under, there's a BCF umbrella, and it says, nominations to the committees. School board members in cooperation with the superintendent will seek recommendations for prospective candidates for the committees. Candidates shall represent a broad cross-section of the community and meet the requirements for service on the committee. And it goes on, and it addresses, you know, that anybody can be nominated or recommended. Then, under the, what we were just dealing with, with the specific to the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, or specific to CAC and others, was spelling out what we were expecting from them. So the BCF broadly defines the effort of trying to have the broad cross-section of the community, that anybody is welcome. But then we had just carried over that piece with Gifted and CAC and others, based upon their current efforts that they had underway at the time.
Yeah, but I still think that, and I agree with that, I don't disagree about the BCF and what it states in subsection C, service on, no, B, nominations to the committee. But I think that there, and I guess just a good rule of thumb when we're looking at policy, is that it does, the way that it's worded right now, it does present almost a little bit of a conflict, and you'd have to go look somewhere else. So if we, whatever we can do to try to make it very plain, and to show that it's, you know, that anyone could be nominated, and where recommendations could come from the advisor committee, it would just tighten it up.
I'm not disagreeing with it.
So what if we, what if we put language, since the BCF is the broad policy, and the individual committees have their policies underneath this one, what if we add, we have the language here, under B, and then you can, we can add some type of a statement that says that the board encourages the committees to recruit and recommend individuals for application, you know, we could put something like that, you know, with the superintendent. But the applications have to come up through to the board.
Well, I think they still do that.
Yeah.
I think, Ms. Jackson, can you pull the, with the policy, can you scroll down? So within the existing policy, you have those different items, the role of the staff, the committee tenure, the appointment process, the role of board liaisons, scrolling down. And then, right here, there are cross-references within the policy, under cross-reference to the ones that come beneath it. So if you go to BCFA, it takes you to one, to CAC, GAC, and so forth. So because there are sometimes different state codes and other things that may exist for those specific committees, that's why you have them out then separately, that tries to marry the broad policy to the, to the specific one. Can you scroll up just a little bit? And so you can see here, right here, under the legal references, that's where it also ties to whatever may be in the state code around the requirements around some of the committees that fall within that, within that framework. So the existing policy does provide that overview. Then you go into any individual advisory committee for anything specific there. So the intent there is, if you wanted to make a change to the school health advisory committee, you could go in and make that change to that one policy. At one time, it was all merged together. So it meant every time you wanted to make one change to one specific thing, you had to make change to everything, and it became confusion, confusing. Or if the board decided it wanted to add an additional advisory committee, you would just add BCF whatever, add that there, do the cross-reference, and now it has its own framework.
Okay. Ms. Camson?
When I read it, I kind of saw it the same way, I think, that Ms. Clanton did. I mean, I'm reading one here, BCFC, number two, with the recommendation of the nominating committee and the approval of the superintendent. To me, it looks, and every time I read something that's crossed through, it just looks like it's clarifying that the board is the one that's doing the appointments, you know, by, that's why those are crossed off. Aside from that, it looks like it's been, like, and appointed by, and here's another one, the BCFB, and appointed by the superintendent on behalf of the school board. It just seems like it's, all of the sound like the authority of the board in making the appointments, which is clearly stated at the beginning, is what this is clarifying. Aside from that, doesn't seem like we're really making any changes. No one's changing all this stuff, which looks great. It's just a little wording to clarify...
Cleaning up the language.
Yeah, cleaning up the language to clarify that the school board, as it says, makes the appointments, and anybody is eligible to apply, without any screen. It looks like it's saying there's no screening between the application and the board. No one else gets to pick and choose who gets to come to the board, is how I read the corrections that you made, and they're just minor little things. All of this just stays in place as it was, which is, certainly doesn't look to me like anything needs to be changed there. But everyone I read, when I look at a cross-out, basically, it's just clarifying that the board makes the decision on who's appointed. So I'm not sure why there's a problem with it.
There's, there's no problem.
Oh.
The process is, we have an existing policy. I was asked to work with Mr. Clanton on some recommendations. He shared with me, I shared with him some information, he shared some things back, we're presenting to the board. And what you have in here is not fully what we have here. So I just want to make sure that the board is, so, Ms. Jackson, can you go to the BCFC? Click on that one, for example.
So if you notice here, the full policy has the intro language, it has duties and responsibilities, you scroll down.
You're not recommended, because, I mean, that's about, I mean, that's about stuff that...
So when we are looking at section B, when we look on here, you're not seeing the full policy. So as I said to Mr. Clanton, I don't have any objection to, if it's the will of the board, to have all the, to change the policy, so the superintendent doesn't make recommendations, that it goes through the board. I don't have any problem with it. But I think what's important is that the board has an understanding, which is what we normally do in the policy committee, that you have the existing policy, you have any recommendations for changes, and that you have the opportunity to see the changes and have a discussion around why the changes are being recommended.
But I do want to, excuse us, Jordan, I didn't cut you off. I do want to raise the point that we're not taking away, the superintendent would still be like anyone else, could make recommendations. The language and what we're trying to do here is trying to open it up, that, and clarify that individuals, you know, parent groups who may be the advisor committee, I think will become out of this discussion, would have the ability to go to that application and fill it out and submit it. If the superintendent found that there was someone that she wanted, or whoever that, you know, whoever the superintendent is wanted to present that forward, then that's what they could do. I think it's about trying to make sure that we have individuals who are willing, and that we have a process. And I think the other thing, too, is that, you've stated it, Mr. Jordan, we've, this is here, but I think it's also incumbent upon us to make sure we're following the process, and making sure that it happens, and that we're getting individuals to get there. Now, we've got committees, but we also have a lot of openings, and I think there's an opportunity for us to kind of clean that up. But we're not trying to change the whole policy. We're just talking about clarifying a small portion of this.
And how long would we need to wait, as we sit here with all these advisory committees with openings on them? It seems like things tend to take a long time to get done by this board. Would we have a hard deadline that would say they would report back next month and we would vote on it? Or would it drag on for the next six months?
Here, you presented that timeline, I thought that was...
Yeah, I think we're looking at, it's almost like 60 days, so we get it in one month, and the next month, we're taking action.
And it's a hard deadline, because we don't always seem to honor our deadlines either.
It's just like in anything. You want to get people on board it quickly, and get them hitting the ground running, when you lose interest.
Ms. Bassin?
So currently, we have two committees that currently the policy states that the superintendent will be making the appointments, which is Shaq and the CTE.
Yes.
So if, as Mr. Jordan said, if the recommendation is to provide this, to go through, to provide these documents to go through the policy committee, is this board recommending that we change the policies? That is the change that I see, that, are you recommending that we change the policies to be that all committee appointments be done by the board?
Yes.
Yeah, and honestly, because we're having the conversation here, I don't even think we need to go back to the policy committee. I just think that we need to wordsmith it on the things that we've heard from here and bring it back. I'm a strong believer that you send back to committee work, but the simple fact that we created an ad hoc committee to review this, this is a recommendation coming from the ad hoc committee back to the board. Not dismissing anything that you do there, but I, again, not for the sake of sending things and holding it up, but that would be another month before we even got to it, and we're looking at June right in the face, where several of these members are up for renewal. And I think that it's only fair for us to be able to put a process in place, clean some things up, and then be able to make appointments, and then also let other individuals know there's opportunities to be able to serve. And so that's no slight to you and your committee whatsoever, but I'm just saying, I think that we could cut the whole process out, because we're already here having a conversation with that, too.
Okay. But we still need to come back to the discussion, are we agreeing that, that the board will be making all the appointments with, in collaboration with the superintendent?
Yes.
I believe that, yeah. I mean, the superintendent's, just like right now, this would be the, this is what I'm expecting in this environment, that she could have, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's how we've been doing, even though it's been, you know, she's brought recommendations forward.
Obviously, the voting would be the board members.
Right, so, yeah.
So to that point, Dr. Gabriel, number three in that section B, you have to strike that, and same, the CTE advisory, you would have to strike number three. That one does not have any markings on it, because that wouldn't be consistent with what's happening in two.
Mm-hmm.
Number three, for me to adjust it. On the CTE advisory, B3.
Okay.
That would have to be taken out also. Oh, yeah, right.
My opinion on the CTE one is that we keep the process by which there's a nominating committee of the CTE advisory committee itself. I think there's value and also a certain level of efficiency, having the, that advisory committee and perhaps others, but at this time, that advisory committee making some recommendations because of their knowledge and experience with the work and so forth. I think that, as a board, we always have the right to final approval. But I think it's going to, we run the risk of putting even additional burden and responsibility on the board to try to do all this vetting, and where I think we have a committee, and they do good work, and have been doing good work, and I think it's good to try to empower and provide support for our volunteers who are doing this work with our staff.
So let me just restate, to make sure I'm understanding exactly what you're saying. Specifically for the CTE policy, you want to have language in there that says, based on... that says, based on what we know about how the C T E committee has functioned currently and in the past, for their applicants, if they have interest to come through a nominating committee, the nominating committee alerts the boards in some fashion, whether that be through an email or, you know, letting us know. And then we still get the applications through the clerk, but we know that the nominating committee has endorsed them.
Yeah. Basically, I'm just recommending that we leave the policy as is. And if the board wants to take out the approval of the superintendent, you know, the board can do that. But I'm saying, right now, we have an existing policy that includes a nominating committee from the advisory committee. I'm just saying, my feeling is we should leave it in there. Or if we decide to remove it, we should at least give the, that committee the courtesy to know that the board is considering it and get their feedback. Because we don't know right now, you know, they could be in the process of doing that. And I just don't want to pull the rug out from under folks or anything like that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. I also think that even with the others, like with G A C and C A C, we should give them, if the board is considering these changes, we should give them notice and alert that we are doing that because I just remember the amount of time that they spent putting all this stuff together. And I don't want to just have them blindsided if we make, make these changes.
Right. I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Okay. So we, so we'd have to get redlined versions of the full policies and re-adopt them next month? Right, is that the timeline here?
Yes, next month.
Okay.
The other thing I just want to be clear about, under the existing policy, there is nothing that has prevented the board from making appointments. We can make appointments today if we have gone through a process and folks have submitted it. And that's why we were working with the clerk to get the application redone. Because what occurred was with the changes from, in clerks, the online application was going to an email address that the current clerk administration didn't have access to. So they redid the form so that they could get access to the, to the application. But part of what we need to do is to make sure that we are constantly advertising so that we are getting that broad cross-section of the, of the community. And we know some people, you know, are online, some people aren't. So to me, as part of some of the efforts that the board is talking about in regards to community engagement, it's an opportunity for us, kind of like what we had on the calendar before. We could spend the summer really promoting the advisory committees, what they are, community engagement, how many openings that we had, and what we had, what our intent was this year was in September to then adopt those recommendations. So I think if you really, I think it's a good thing for the board to do this. It's really an opportunity to promote the work that we're doing, spend some time, get the word out there, get the applications in the libraries, like we would do if anything else, have the applications come in. And then as part of our July work, we can review them. And then by August, September, be ready to make the appointments.
You read my mind.
Yeah. I just, it's always done.
And I mean, and I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Jordan in this respect. I think even going a step further, and, you know, when we go to our website and we have, you know, about our division, and we've got a school board, it would be really nice to even just have a page that's dedicated to our boards. And advisory team. So that you not only have a central place to get the application, you've got the information, but more importantly, the work that's happening in those committees and those advisory groups could be listed there. The more things that we can give to the community and let them know, because you may have somebody who, who has an interest in it, so.
I agree, yeah. And piggybacking on what we had kind of discussed the last time that we had the discussion about the advisory committee, I really like the idea of doing, with Channel 47 doing a little piece, a video, we can get that out and push that out. And then looking at a time, maybe twice during the school year, during the calendar year, where they can come and perhaps present to us or, or how we can get just some small little snippets, not minutes, but just some small little snippets as to what's going on in each of the committees.
Or M P S now, I'm not quite sure we've got it built in there, but there's, there's plenty of opportunities that we can utilize to get the information out.
Okay.
Yeah, but just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll just speak, so in the, when we worked on this before and we were talking about getting these, you know, updated. So under the overarching policy, under F, where we have board liaisons, that was the idea there, that, you know, the board members don't vote, they're not counted as the quorum. But at our work sessions, where we have board reports, that would be the opportunity for board members who are these liaisons to say, just want to give you a heads up, these are some things that are happening with the different committees, but also being respectful of the, the committee work so that we don't start making recommendations before the committees have finished their work.
And I think that's one of the things that Dr. Gabriel has taken really from a recommendation that you had, Mr. Jordan, in regard to moving forward with the agendas, making sure that there's time for us to actually report out from the different advisory groups and as liaisons that we're able to give the full picture of what's going on to the board.
Okay, okay. Dr. Boone?
I just want to go to the page on appointment process. And want to be able to build a strong bridge between rolling applications and the board receiving those applications because we don't want them to get lost in that, you know, something comes in, the clerk sends it to the board, but we don't necessarily have a timeline for when those will be addressed. And I think that's something that, and I don't have a recommendation since, you know, seeing this now, I don't have a recommendation. But I think, again, there should probably be an appointed time in this process that the clerk would forward to it, you know, is it monthly, is it whatever else, so that we don't lose applications in, in the, the hosts of emails we get daily. So just something to think about in terms of that process. Because when you say rolling applications, we just need to figure, and then it says, application is sent to the school board. Well, sometimes you could be giving them daily, and they would get lost in the shuffle. So if we can try to define the process of when those will be sent to the board at a certain time each month or something.
And, and I agree with you, Dr. Boone. I just think that a rolling process is, almost creates a bank of nominees so that we can always go to. We may not have an opening now, but we may have one a couple of months later.
I, I agree, but I just, my, my concern is from the application to the board's hands, making sure that, again, we aren't sending them sometimes daily or something, depending on when they come in, and they get lost in, in the bank of emails that you receive.
Or create a folder or something.
Well, you could, yeah, we could, but I, I'm just saying. So I don't have a, I just didn't want them to get lost in that.
And honestly, when we get down to that, that depth of detail, that honestly, I would send that back to the administration for you all to figure out what works best, and then it comes back to us with it.
Well, I just addressed it because you have an application process listed here, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay. All right. Ms. Basine?
The one, one thing that I, I would like to see us address is also a feedback mechanism. So when our advisory committees provide us with their end of year reports, I know, at least for a couple of them, that's been a source of frustration, is that, you know, they provide us with a report with recommendations. The board, you know, receives it, but there, other than a thank you, you know, some don't get anything back, like, you know, what are we going to do with that recommendation? And Mr. Jordan mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, we had an opportunity previously to do the chat and chew where we had, you know, was able to have, we were able to have a discussion around some of those recommendations, but we've kind of gotten away from that. So I want to see us bring that back, you know, into, into the work. Because they need to feel like that the time that they spend, and they spend a lot of time doing the work, doing the analysis, making sure that we're following, you know, the, the plans that are in place. So they need to feel like their time is being well spent.
And, and I hear you on that, and that is definitely something that I've thought about as I've tried to frame this conversation. I think starting first with the application process, getting that under control. And then that's the next topic to tackle. How are we as a board, how do we want to receive that information? Is it presenting to the board? Is it getting the updates and how we give them the information back?
Well, I, I bring it up now as part of this because if we're starting to address some of the, the language change in the policies, that is one thing that needs to be included. So it is, you know, not necessarily, if you're looking to adopt a policy next month, then that needs to rise in priority, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say, and part of that, it may be of value just, again, for the board to hear from the administration, again, how the, the process works with the different local plans that may be tied to some of these committees. So in, in one sense, there's the letters we may receive from G A C. We got a letter from C A C, I think, back in January or February. And they may speak to some broad issues for the board to consider. But then as part of the work of the committees, at least in some of the committees, when we reviewed the C T E plan, when we reviewed the gifted plan, the special education plan, there is a internal process that's going on where those advisory committees are providing feedback or receiving information as part of that plan development process. So then when the board is voting on the plan, once we receive it from the recommendation from the administration, we are, in essence, responding to that feedback process. We're just not necessarily always in that sausage making, which is a little different from the letters that we receive that may be broader than what's specific to that local plan. I just think it's important we understand that so we don't get, get it too confused.
So let me, let me wrap this up by saying that we sincerely appreciate the efforts and the service that all of the members of these committees are providing. And we know that they are working very hard right now. And this process that the board has undertaken is a means to get us acquainted with what the process is and to better streamline accessibility, the, the best representation that we can get, and to put forth steps so that the process is, is easy for them. So next steps is going to be redlined versions and clean versions of these policies sent out to the board for feedback. Ms. Jackson, if you can work on compiling that database of the members of all the committees with their names, their contact info, and what else do we have here?
Terms.
We need to have some language considering a feedback mechanism.
Put that in there. We said addresses, right? Or is it code at least, so we can figure out where they're coming from?
I think info can be their address. And you had said something about affiliations.
Yeah.
Affiliations. A feedback mechanism. And then when we come back to this discussion, we can outline some steps for advertisement and making sure that we're doing our job with getting the information out to prospective members.
So, Dr. Boone, is it okay if we, I know I brought up the idea about a website or at least a webpage.
I'll take you back to the senior team, these comments, and we'll work on them.
Appreciate it. And just for clarity, so I, the, we got a, I think, Ms. Jackson, it responded to a request that you had sent earlier, and we received these various rosters. Are we saying, are those correct? Or are we saying we're going to go back and look at them again?
I, I can't, I can't work with the information that we have there. It's in so many different places. I think it's easier if we have one sheet with all of the members and their information and base it off of that. Now, that information that was provided to us, it, like the G A C shows, members who have, how many members have been at meetings, members who haven't been at meetings. So that is, is important. But I think we need to just start with a baseline of who do we have in each committee, their information, when they were appointed, and what is their term limit?
Oh, I'm not, I just want to be clear. So we're doing, you wanted to do a different spreadsheet? Is that what you're asking for?
There is no spreadsheet. All we have right now are different forms of how things are organized in each of the different committees.
We were asked to get the information, the membership of each committee, and that's what.
That's what it is, right there. So the Shack one looks different from the G A C one, looks different from the C T E one. We just need it simplified. That's all I'm asking for. All right, so we have next steps. We are going to be prepared to vote on the recommendations at our formal meeting in June. Okay? I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this.
And I just want to make sure, because I didn't hear it, that we also look at the report out that you mentioned as well?
Feedback.
Feedback?
Feedback mechanism.
Could be that they would receive sort of timely feedback, and that may vary depending on, you know, the committee. But so it'd be generalized, you know, keep it general, but make it. So would it be, just to clarify, would it be included with the June 5th policy discussion? Just to make sure that everything is.
Yeah, okay. All right. So. So Ms. Jackson, if you could, under the policy discussion for the June 5th work session, if you could put advisory committee policies. Okay, Dr. Boone, V R S program.
Yes, this is a kind of different request of the board. Something that's, that's come down to the district from V R S with the goal of making an opportunity available to our employees. So I'm going to ask Ms. Ingram, if, or I can walk us through, whichever way. It, it's a new benefit opportunity for employees to have long-term care insurance. We currently have accessibility to long-term care through our benefits package in Norfolk Public Schools. Folks can opt in. This is another long-term opportunity directly through V R S. Nothing that M P S has to do in terms of payroll deduction. We don't manage the program. A, a board approval would allow our employees to be able to access this opportunity through V R S. It is portable, so if folks go to other school districts or wherever else, they, they can maintain it. Payments will go directly to the third-party entity that manages this. So this is why we bring this to the board. Did I miss anything, Basine?
I got it.
So, Dr. Boone, we're set to take action on this item in today's, tonight's meeting?
Yes, yes. I mean, again, it, it just opens up another benefit. It, unlike those that go through our open enrollment, there is an enrollment process and timeline associated with this, with the state. But it, it gives, I think, a choice to our employees to decide which long-term care program they may be interested in. There's one through the Norfolk Consortium benefits package. And then this becomes another external to that. So this wouldn't show up in the consortium documents. And so employees would be notified of this availability.
Are there any questions from the board?
She answered mine about the portability.
So is this a one-time agreement, or was it coming forward as annual?
I think it, in the, it comes up for a renewal, I think, in the agreement. They, they only open it up certain times. This is a Commonwealth of Virginia program, and they have done some modification to their program. So they are opening up to those who have not participated, to school divisions and political subdivisions. So this is a one-time opportunity now to offer it to our employees.
Actually, it's, excuse me, I'm sorry. The term of this agreement is for three years, beginning at the date of its execution, so.
So right now, this item is set to be under the consent agenda. Is everyone okay with it being under the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Thank you, Ms. Ingram. All right. Well, that concludes our discussion for the workshop.
Oh, I guess we can do it in closed.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I make a motion to enter into closed session.
Second.
Second.
Oh. Ms. Martin made the motion, and the second was Ms. Smith.
Move that members of the School Board go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a discussion or consideration of the performance of specific officers and employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion are regular, are the regular personnel docket of this day and the discussion of the resignation and possible replacement of a specific employee, be the discussion or consideration of disciplinary or any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is a regular student support docket of this day. See consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion refers to advice of counsel as needed regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student matters identified above and the taking of minutes in the executive session. And for the vote, Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.